Picture me to go. The only thing that very funny boy needs to do is...
I'm kind of in part of the county council, actually, for him. Thank you for coming. I'm Arnold Fisgandry, Chair of the County Council. So before we start, I'd like to talk about changes we've made since our last forum. Last forum we had was six years ago. We had one soon, a few of the voters a couple of years ago. First thing I want to announce, it's known, we have spoken about it before, and that is that part of the county council is not part of Party 101. In 2001, the board of part of 101, the county council met and decided to proceed this way to benefit both organizations. In our view, it's part of the county council, a lot more visibility, a lot more prominence, makes us more established. However, our mission remains the same. The current vice county council advocates on behalf of other residents instructs to keep them informed, interested, and engaged in community matters. So, we're asking you to join Part 101 as a resident member. There's flyers under chairs. So only one of our speakers here helps us pull forums like this, engage with the community, and help where we can. One example is the improvements we've made, the city events we've made, on the Estanley Road and Justin Crossing. These kinds of things are advocated by the County Council, and your resident member helps. In addition, you get newsletters, you get to learn about the public service, there's very much you can go through, and get 10% discount on which it was. The other thing I want to talk about is the format of the forum. Over the last many years, we've tried to be responsive to community input on our forums, and we really wanted to have a more local, more focused forum. We wanted to retain community input on the fresh bits, so we wanted to make sure we have a positive or understanding perspective of candidates. Our forums are non-partisan. The purpose of our forum is to make it one of the public. We have no particular agenda, simply to inform the public. So, with this forum, we've got over 200 questions from community members. Over the years, we've had many forums with many questions, and many of us have found that our questions are not asked. So I'm hopeful that you find this forum informative, and your forums questions are answered, even if their specific wording is not used. So next week, same time, same place, we will be having a mayor forum, and we hope you can attend that. To the forum chair moderator, I want to say some thank yous. So a big thank you to him at his school, for the spending. They set up chairs, they help us get all this working, they're very helpful. Another thank you to Carter County Council's board and staff that has helped us publicize this event and organize this thing. Thank you to the County Council Committee, who's worked very hard on this. And a really big thank you to our two candidates, Joy and Julie, for being here. It takes a while, it takes a day. To have a local favorite, we picked an angry, who has reported on local events and local issues. After a year of general pandering, we felt even higher meant to exceed our expectations. We first met in coffee outside Seaside Market, and we had immediate comfort in his abilities, his ability to moderate this forum. Subsequently, I found out about his impressive credentials. As we know, he was a freelance journalist who formerly worked for Post News, specializing in local and regional politics. He has freelance for numerous newspapers in the Los Angeles area. He worked for CBS Los Angeles, NBC News Aline. He appeared as a special guest on an episode of The Diaz's Rock Table. And he's previously worked as a crime reporter for the Union newspaper in Sacramento, where he won a CNPA, California News Publishers Association Award for investigative reporting. He graduated from UCLA, where he worked for the school newspaper. With that, I'd like to enter. With that, I would like to start the forum, and leave you in Steve's chair, give your hands.
Good evening, hello, this is the District 3 Councilmember forum hosted by the Carter County Council and Carter 101 Main Street Association. Tonight, we have the privilege of moderating this debate between Joy Lyons, seated on the left, and Julie Thunder, seated on the right, for Encinitas's third district seat on the City Council. Before we begin, I'd like to briefly go over the thanks for our forums, which I will note are been agreed to by the candidates here tonight. The candidates will each have two minutes for a noting statement. They'll each have equal time to answer each question, which will be usually one minute, but it will be established at the discretion of the moderator. Each candidate will have time for quality clarifications, also at the discretion of the moderator. Each candidate will have the right to speak to all questions, including those posed to the other candidates. Each candidate will also have one minute for a closing statement. Now, as the audience, we also ask you to adhere to a series of guidelines, which are most often exercised in the later age for this purpose. As audience, we would ask that you refrain from blogs or demonstrations during the forum. We ask that you concede during the event and not appear with orderly conduct of the forum. Finally, we ask that you place your cell phones and sign up within the duration of this event. All of the questions for this debate have been formulated by those submitted by the residents of Oregon, to be picked out at the discretion of the Carter County Council and moderator. Either candidate was not an opportunity to review the question of Oregon. I've already had each candidate before this forum have gone through the ground rules. And so with that, we'll now hear a closing statement from both Joy and Julie before we get into our questions. And we have decided, given my cost, I would hear it from Julie first, so. You have two minutes.
Does this work? I'm gonna stand for my responses, and that's the right seat. I would say, the biggest conflict facing Encinitas is that justification, the unwilling push for more housing. You might quote it, it's all for it. She's on record saying she wants more, and she voted yes for every project that's coming for her. Justification has been a threat for decades. Just as it was in 1985, when I moved to Carter. Back then, this was a calm and safe place to start the home. I was here when we incorporated to prevent overdevelopment. I was here when we passed Prop A, to protect us from overdevelopment. And I'm here now, while we face yet another threat from overdevelopment, and asking you any choice. Will Sioux County have 15 new oversized apartment complexes with more quality? They'll bring about 5,000 new people to our city, increasing the traffic in our already congested roads. What they won't bring is enough affordability to satisfy a state in California. And they won't come with enough parking, or improved streets, or more schools. They won't bring extra water, and that's a piece of the puzzle nobody wants to talk about. I stand in opposition to this housing push, but we can't just say no. I don't want lawsuits, so here's my strategy. Say no where we can't negotiate where we must, delay at every opportunity, and in the meantime, push harder past the statewide local initiative. If that passes in 2024, our problem will be much easier to deal with. We'll be able to make plans that work for Encinitas and have the support of our voters. Just to be clear, I don't hate developers. They're doing their job, but I don't want much more than what they are selling. Our local government has a different job to stick up for the interests of the residents. If you choose me, I'll fight for you, not against you. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie and Joy. You have two minutes.
Hello, Encinitas. Hello, Carter. Thank you for coming, and thank you for being interested in democracy. I'm honored to be your candidate, and I am your City Councilmember for District 3, which is all of Carter, part of Encinitas and part of Encinitas. The reason I'm here is because now or never, we need strong leadership. I've built a successful career on leadership, and I understand what's needed to bring our city forward. I've created landscape architects, I've created people districts, and I've preserved historic properties. What I've found is it's a really unique skill to bring to policy development at our city. It's an understanding of how to make a place beautiful and functional. And I love policy, so it's like a perfect fit for my design skills and for policy development. And it's unique skills and knowledge. I was selected to fulfill Jody's coverage seat. So I've been sitting on City Council now for 18 months. And I'm the freshman, I'm kind of the new person. Now, Jody was interested in the environment, and so am I interested in housing, and so am I interested in people, and so am I. And so, what I'm trying to do in her position and do in the future is really make our place a better place to live. So, I've developed new policies, including one on water that recently initiated water conservation for drought response. And as we get to the forum tonight, I'll highlight some of the other policies that I'm forward to introducing. What I want to know, do though, is some of you have come here, and you want to know the difference between candidates. You know, that's what a forum is all about. And I want to tell you, we are very different candidates, not only in style, but in substance. I have a party that is kind of cheap, humble, it's not clean, but thick, not in the flames of discontent. And I hope I will earn your vote. Thank you.
Alright, and with that, I can move to our first question, which will be addressed towards Julie. You'll have a moment to respond. So this first question is, Julie, what is your opinion of converting to a five-seat council with a rotating mayor in Encinitas? What would be the upside to it, and what would be the downside to it?
Well, this is up front on my webpage. When I ran for mayor two years ago, it's something I can't hang on. I think our current situation of four councilmembers with the elected to your term mayor is not serving our city well. You've seen what's happened. Our current mayor took control of our city and took power, like you've ever seen before in Encinitas. And I don't want to see that happen again. In the meantime, new Encinitas isn't represented. They're divided into District 3, District 2, and District 4. And I would like to see five districts with a rotating mayor. Now, before, we had a council-elected mayor. I think that was a good idea, see, I'm confident. But I'd like to see the mayor rotate, and there are plenty of cities that do it, and there are ways to do it, so that it's acceptable. Thank you.
Joy, you want to respond?
Thank you. I think some of what you might have heard might not be quite accurate. We are, we are not a strong mayor structure. It's called a weak mayor structure. But what the structure is, everyone has one vote. The mayor doesn't have any more vote than anyone in City Council. And that's something nuanced, and I think a lot of people might not see that clearly. This is not no more power to a mayor than a City Councilmember, or no more power than a rotating mayor. But, I understand the question, because I think a lot of us are concerned with our communities. We have five communities. It's hard to break ourselves up into four districts somehow, so I get that. The five communities are really solid and really strong. We've been working in this direction to look at the needs of broader communities outside of ours, because we're in a district with them. And I know that's true here, because we have all of Carter, part of Encinitas, part of Encinitas. So, we've been working hard to unify behind that. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Joy. And this next question will also be directed towards Joy. Which is, should there be a vacancy on the City Council in the future? Do you believe that, should you build via appointment, or via a special election?
I think, thank you. I think that's an option that we can choose, one way of running a mayor, but I want to explain the pros and cons. I think that when you think about an election, it seems like, yeah, that's like, that's good, right? Yes, people, yeah, we want people to come on to our City Council. So I get that, but, and I think that's preferable. But, I also know, to be expedient, to fill the seat, and to move forward, because it's an unexpected vacancy, it's not a planned vacancy, then a meeting can be successful and expedient. But, I think we have the choice. So, the way that we are structured is an option. I think we tend to lean towards the appointment, so we can keep pace and keep the decision-making going. But, I think voters still have the option.
Thank you. Julie, you have one minute to answer the question.
We've seen what the appointments have done to the city in Encinitas. Three more councilmembers were appointed. Our council votes five over, and over, and over. If we have a divided council, that are, that actually discuss, debate, and evaluate different sides of issues, then an appointment might work. Because through that appointment, you would actually get a candidate or a replacement that tends to be lean, moderate, comes in the middle, and the council helps bring them together. But if you have a council full of appointees, and you vote to appoint again, and they continue your five vote votes like you've been having, something is very wrong. So, I would not presume to decide now, but I think that's something that the council might talk to other candidates, and they're very eager to discuss how to change that.
Thank you. Our next question, along the same lines, is, what is each of your views of city staff's responsiveness to residents? Now, Julie, you have one minute to answer the question. Sure, the question is, what is your view of city staff's responsiveness to residents?
Well, I can say, every time I'm on the City Hall, I've been mad for graciousness, kindness, whiteness, and helpfulness. But I can also say that I have not, I can't say how many doors. Every day, I go out a couple hours, and every day, more than one person tells me they're so fed up with City Hall, and what's going on there. I met a couple who submitted their plans for their remodel. They just don't want a lowball, not talking about a bad situation. They submitted their plans last August, and two weeks ago, they still haven't heard anything from the city. I'm concerned about that. No, I look forward to, and maybe honestly, to investigate what's going on.
Thank you, Julie. Joy, you have one minute to respond.
Thank you. I hear in that question, maybe a concerned community about responsiveness with the staff at City Hall. And so I want to address that very carefully and clearly. Because we have, we have very good staff, and we had a little bit of issue with COVID. Now, I don't want to say that that's the issue, because we're coming through that, and we're doing what every business is doing to recover from COVID. But, I think our staff is really good and really improving, and we're always looking for ways to continue to improve. And I think that our job at City Hall is to be responsive to the whole community, so we will continue to strive to do that, and provide the best service possible. Did you put stop on it? Oh. But, so. Just in case if I missed the stop, just like we did.
Thanks, Julie. Now, we'll go on a little bit of a different topic. So, this question will be addressed to Joy. That is, do you question zoning regulations and housing density along more this sphere, local municipal control, or state control? Along those lines, do you support SB 9 and 10? Now, SB 9, just to explain, is a law that's in California, where cities are required to allow homeowners to divide single-family properties into two lots, and allows up to two homes to be built in each of these respective lots. SB 10 provides local agencies made a lawful ordinance to allow up to 10 building units on any parcel to be developed, if located in a transit-rich area. So, just to reiterate the question, do you support all these laws? And to answer the first part of the question, do you question zoning regulations and housing density along more this sphere, local control or state control?
So we have our zoning, and that's what we regulate here, and I support that. I support our land planning and our zoning in our regulations as the local. Now, I think what the question actually gives is, how do I feel about the state mandate for housing? And, so I'm interpreting that right up, thanks for that question. And that is that I think we should protect ourselves locally and have control locally. Now, that doesn't mean we're not gonna follow the housing law, because it's a state law, and we already sued the state for terms and lost. So, others will choose to do other things, but we've learned the best way to address the state mandate is to reform the state policies. And I'm working with the League of California Cities to do that, with all of our other cities who are at the table and working in Sacramento to reform our state housing. But the local preference, and SB 9 and 10, I did write a letter to our governor and to the authors of that, to say that I was opposed to it.
Julie.
I think a lot of you know that with the local control petition, I was one of the largest gathers, the city in Encinitas, signature gathers. I don't even want to call it, we had it since the day we became a state in 1850. We've always been in charge of our own destiny. Each city has that right. The state of California took it away, leaving out SB 9 and SB 10. I don't know why citizens of California didn't jump up and shout at that. They took away our right to decide what city built in our city, and now we have control. And they're also forcing us to build high-density projects in places that are probably inappropriate, like Hudson, like Clark, like Alaber, Bel Air is not that bad, but it's an incredible spot, and there's no plan of the city to upgrade those roads. You have to think about what this city's doing. A legislature for Fresno, or Oakland, or Bakersfield does not know what is right for Encinitas. So I'm for local control against SB 9 and 10.
Thank you. The next question will also be addressed to Julie. You'll have one minute to respond. When it comes to the El Camino Realistic Plan, do you believe that Prop A vote should be required to make some changes? And if voters reject the plan, would you vote to overturn their decision to mean state mandates?
Can you repeat that question?
Yeah, it's kind of a longer question. When it comes to El Camino Realistic Plan, do you believe that Prop A vote should be required to make some changes? And if voters reject the plan, would you vote to overturn their decision to mean state mandates?
Well, Prop A is the law in Encinitas. So of course I support having a Prop A vote to upsize that corridor. The current plans to upsize El Camino Real is not in place, but the direction that pass forces going is to add 5,000 to 8,000 new apartments in that narrow strip of our city. I just don't think that's right. So if a Prop A vote didn't pass, I would never support overturning the vote of the people in Encinitas. We already have Prop A vote, and I don't want to give it up. So I would respect it, and it would be good to overturn having a Prop A vote.
Julie.
I think many of us understand that Prop A vote and the state mandate can be in conflict. And I think that's a challenge, because we have voted for Prop A. And so, the El Camino Realistic Plan will come forward equal for vote. And I think that's one of your questions, I think that was one of the questions. It will come forward equal for vote. And that is how we will move forward, if it's approved, we will move forward. And if it's not, we would not move forward. And I think that shouldn't be in question, because Prop A is legal, and it is how we will move forward. Now, El Camino Real, I, as a landscape architect, I see our opportunities there as being really wonderful, to create freeways and pedestrian and bicycle access areas, and green spaces for the people who live there. So I'm actually thinking about, because I think our big box stores are making some of the smaller stores, but time won't be as needed. And so we should think about adaptively, thinking into the future, not back to the past, and doing great things with our El Camino Real specific corridor.
Thank you, Joy. This next question will also be for Joy. How would you balance the need to meet state or local housing mandates with citizens' concerns about how such mandates may impact their quality of life?
So, the state mandates seem to just keep on happening. And I know we all probably feel very exhausted by it, which is not through another legislative process with more laws associated with state rule. So, I think what I, how I want to answer that is, we need to keep on looking at reforming the state laws, so that we're more responsive to what our Encinitas here, our here community. But, we also have the opportunity to look at our own policies, and improve our policies to preserve things better. I can go down the rabbit hole on this, because I think that we have not done a good job of protecting ourselves, so that we make sure our mature trees don't get cut down, so that we make sure we've got the right setbacks between buildings. And these are justice standards, we can agree locally, and we can protect ourselves better with the state law. I, what's the second part of that question?
Just how mandates may impact...
Quality of life is the most important thing for all of us, and that is like true moral, for how we make our decisions to the community.
Julie.
The setbacks that were just mentioned, that continue to... The setbacks that were just mentioned, that continue to, as always, have rules about in our municipal code, were changed by the state of California. SB nine and ten is a respect for state backs. At, wherever you live, or you live, or you live, SB nine and ten doesn't care if you don't want a whole other house in your neighbor's backyard to fill up your restaurant. City Council's not shocked by that. The state wants it over. That's what I'm against. The, um, sorry, just a bit of time. I want to go back, I'm going to go back to El Camino Real at this point. I'm sorry. On El Camino Real, however, everyone knows the governor just passed a bill that owners of commercial property can tear out with commercial property under certain circumstances that are very loose and need building apartments. So, for El Camino, for real housing, say it that way. So, for El Camino Real, it's rough to jump in on it, and, um, sorry about that. That's a good question.
Next question also to Julie, which is, what is your view of the city council opposing the major U vote, and do you enjoy the council's approval of the U's in the hard projects?
She asked these things that are bad things, and I'm trying not to be, I'm trying by things to be happy about. Our votes were true. The city and the city is voted against such a ticket. The people in the city is voted against such a new. The mayor of the city is took that back to a judge and have a judge overturn. Then, to undo Prop A, so that we could get another housing element through, she sued the residents of Encinitas to undo Prop A. Pay attention, folks, with this update on El Camino Real, they've got something in mind. Pay attention to what they will do to overcome our Prop A rejection of eight thousand units on El Camino Real. Sorry to go back to that, but it matters. So, on Prop U, I would not want to return, overturn a vote. The city council had an opportunity to offer another vote, another plan to the citizens of Encinitas, they couldn't take it. Instead, they overturned our vote. And I, I think that's understandable, on every count.
Joy, you have one minute to respond.
I've been on City Council for eighteen months, uh, that's a year and a half. This is a record of something that was done before I was on the City Council. So, I would prefer to, uh, look forward. Um, I don't, I think the question may imply that, what would you do in the future? And I think the people's vote is so important, that we want to hold the people's vote. And I hope that we can unite behind more common interests, because I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a either or. I think we can preserve our history, I think we can preserve our open space, I think we can create a beautiful city, and also provide for housing that's affordable for the next generation, and for our seniors who want to age in place. I think we can do things like workhorse housing. I think we can achieve the supportive housing, maybe not through that housing element entirely, because that's really a small percent. But I think that we can do well, and we just need to unify behind that common goal, and I'd love to help us do that.
Thank you, Joy. Good, good, good topic. Joy, what is your assessment of the Lucadia Street Skate Project, and if you're elected, are there any parts to it that you would like to change? Additionally, do you believe that this was a prudent investment?
Okay. I'm a skateboarder, and I design projects like that. And I have over thirty years of experience creating wonderful freeways, free spaces, and street skates for communities that really improve their economic development in their communities. They also improve the safety in their communities, and they also improve traffic. So, even though this is a traffic calming, uh, street skate, the traffic still moves, it just moves more smoothly, and it moves slower, so it's safer. And then with the bike lanes, we also add another layer of safety with pedestrian, uh, walk lanes, with the crossings, the safe crossings, and then, and under at El Portalo, the train tracks. I see, there's no downside to a street skate project that does all these things, and let me say again, that improves economic development. I was invited to give a talk at National Conference on How Freeways Improve Economic Development. I'm a big advocate for them.
Thank you. Julie, one minute.
Lucadia's been a number of years, really, really long time. Lucadia's been ignored by the City Council for a really, really, really long time. I've always been a proponent of upgrading post-haven to Lucadia. I think it was a mistake to drop it down to one lane each direction, and I think it was shameful to fence off the entire community before they put in another crossing. I wouldn't have done that. I would have said, I'm not going to build it. I might always have known and told it was a real cross, nor the Lucadia Boulevard, and between Lucadia and La Corte. I know what that's like, part of it, we got cut off too. Nobody likes it, it's frustrating. Lucadia's worse. The folks in Lucadia on the east side are cut off of groceries, post offices, restaurants, friends, and a beach. That's not right, folks. For, the city council have been working on Lucadia Street Skate for like twelve or fifteen years. They could have had crossings, they could have had two crossings, they could have had three crossings, if we would have just made it a little cheaper than part of that one. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to provide a little bit of information. The second question that I have on this topic, and this will be addressed to Joy here, actually, which is, will the very undercrossing come to fruition as promised? And if so, when? Also, do you believe that there are faster, less expensive options, so that more crossings can be built with long rails and Encinitas?
I'm sorry, could you say the first part of that again?
Yes. Will the very undercrossing come to fruition as promised? And if so, when? Also, do you believe that there are faster, less expensive options, so that more crossings can be built with long rails and Encinitas?
I think some people are aware that we considered this item at just last week's City Council meeting, the Berri Underpass. And we explained that we have the opportunity to apply for a grant for fifteen million dollars for the Berri Underpass, and, uh, we were getting, uh, permission, we were offered permission for applying for that grant. Now, my opponents stood up and said she did not approve of funding at this time for the Berri Underpass. From my perspective, though, this seat, and from your perspective, too, the only way we can afford these infrastructure projects, no matter if they're big or little, is to get money from our partners, whether it's Sand Bank or Caltrans or the federal government. We are, we've done that for decades, and we, that's the only way we could get improvements, and we need these improvements. So, I'm a favor for the Berri Underpass. I don't think it's elaborate. I know how to read plans, and I have plans, I mean, I have some swirls of concrete, and maybe we want to take that out, but, but they're not elaborate drawings, uh, and it's ADA accessible, and that's really what it is, so, and there's a misunderstanding about what we need to do, um, as.
Thank you. Julie, you have one minute to respond.
Well, probably everyone here knows I live near Berd, not right across from it, but right across from it. Berd is my fam, Berd is my family's crossing point. My children throw a crossing track to go surfing there. Some of you might be saying, that's not cool, that's not safe, you let your children cross the cross. But that's our lifestyle. I'm going to guess, half of you have the same experience. That's our lifestyle. They put that fence in, and they took away our lifestyle. We pay a premium for that lifestyle. Now, that crossing, everybody in Berd wants it, because we want to walk to that, we want to walk to the beach at that. But I, so, against the money grab, because fifteen million, we don't need fifteen million dollars crossing. We can do a punch-through crossing, like San Diego did on the south side. For, I'm going to say, I have no doubt the first cost for, uh, half or less than half. If we did a punch-through crossing, we could do two more punch-through crosses for this fifteen million, fifteen million dollars. And I'm not proud, a part of, in your crossing, when I saw what happened to Lucadia. I, I can't help it. Even though I have paid the crossing, we need one, and I want one. It's just not the way it works in.
Thank you. This is the next question, uh, which is also going to be to Julie, which is, once funding is available, do you believe that Birmingham Street Skate will lead in improvement for traffic and safety? Also, do you believe that Birmingham is the right street for bike lanes or other safer options?
I think Birmingham keeps, uh, great, and, uh, street skate plans I saw for Birmingham, I thought was good. I'm concerned about bike lanes, because that's a steep hill. I'm not sure that we need to squeeze the traffic lanes in so tightly to fit advice there. It seems like there's a lot of side streets with a lot less traffic, that people use anyways. So, I'm concerned about that. I'm not going to go all in on something that I haven't seen in person before, and sure my colleague knows that better than I do. I am concerned about the sidewalk. The people in part of, built that side, paid for, built that sidewalk while we're under control of the county. The county wasn't helping us with safety on Birmingham, with, uh, safety issues on Birmingham. So, the people part of it together, finished in the money, and built the sidewalk themselves with the help and guidance of Parkview Council. That's why we walk around Birmingham, we can see everyone's little handprints and their family names written in this stick. That's old school, I like that. I know it can stay, but we can keep it for historical sake, and we can be creative and find a way to save it with Birmingham.
Thank you, Joy.
The Birmingham project, the street skate project, is a really good example of a project we committed to, to the community for a while, and it's very close to having final design and show of value. It's another example of a project that's really, really important to the community for improving the quality of the roadway and improving the safety of pedestrians, and improving the safety of bicycles. However, I think the pedestrians are a priority here, as well as the cars on this section of Birmingham. But it's a good example of the kind of infrastructure project we're going to go, need to go get going for, and I want to help part of get that money. Now, I've reminded the community, even with the part of town council, to problem solve, how are we going to save the, uh, bikes of the walk? And we can have some really creative ideas that are going to be brought forward into the construction project, and that's awesome, because that's the history, that's what we want to preserve, you know? Our family history, and so we have some really innovative ways to move that forward and preserve the, the women.
Julie. Let's go ahead and move to the next question. What is your vision to preserve the historic Birmingham on those little walks and walk in?
Okay. So, let's get a segue into the vision for preserving the sidewalk panels. Um, I've had with some folks who are experts at doing, uh, digital imagery, and, uh, we've got some ideas from them, um, on how we can do digital 3D imagery of the panels. Now, and then we can create them in 3D and recreate them in other places in, in town, in other places that we would choose in the future, maybe on the rail trail, maybe at the store society, but somewhere we can interpret the history of the panels, and, uh, then recreate them. We could do it even in etching, I've been talking to Bill about that here, uh, I think etching and, uh, so, there's, there are some really creative ways we can do that. Not all of the panels can be actually preserved. We're going to try to preserve some for some of the families that are interested in keeping the handprints of kids or, um, other kinds of history that is unique to, uh, to them on, on the panels.
Julie.
Ah, digital, this, digital, that. Looks like something that I left in the notebook. What I love to do is skating soft paths of large sections. So, I'm going to make this up, because I'm not a contractor. Imagine ten or fourteen sections of sidewalks, you certainly can't cut them up, because you certainly have to go to line. Some are too wide, we're going to need a handblock in the road. You can take a whole section, carry it down, you take it to the police, get it down to the rail trail, lay it side by side along the walking sidewalk, and then you have installation the way people wanted it meant it to be. You have installation on the ground that reflects our district. Would that be expensive now? But we have a lot of contractors in part of, I happen to be good at riding people up, so I'm going to be getting people to chip in and bring their trucks and figure this out, and have the, uh, the channel cut already and compared to the rail trail. You have a truck all the way back to the someone's making soft paths. Pretty soon, you have Birmingham set the street skate down a rail trail. I don't know, it's just an idea.
Thanks, Julie. This, this next question is also going to be directed towards you. What is the proposal to deal with the explosion of the e-bikes, and how would you approach enforcement and safety on rail trail when it comes to bike and e-bike usage?
E-bikes. I'm a mother of four. I'm paranoid, so I'm going to hurt her. I have to work too. I see these kids on bikes, just like you do, and I find myself being so careful around them, that I think they might be getting used to us looking out for them. But you're smiling, I don't want you to get hurt. But that's not right for them. They're learning how to be safe, and we're changing the traffic flow to try to keep them safe. So, number one, I don't think there should be bikes on the rail trail. I think we can change that up, there's a bunch of other ways to do that, and I've talked to, uh, residents on San Antonio Avenue extensively about this. Number two, Carl's just declared e-bike emergency, and I'm on that. They always seem to have to jump on Encinitas, and I'd like to see, once they get on council, how they're doing it, and what their changes.
Thank you. Joy, one minute.
Yes, um, e-bikes are the biggest term people have, and I think, maybe it's amplified right now, because school has started again, and, um, you know, it's just more, more prevalent. So, I think that, um, the e-bike is representative of one, representative of one of many enforcement issues that we have, uh, and it's also education. But as far as enforcement, let me say, that our Sheriff's Department, along with our Mean Envire Safety, is the primary, uh, uh, those primary areas we run for a general plan. We are paying them all the full safety to make sure they keep us safe. And so, we are working on the training right now. The Oak Press, uh, that school has just, uh, uh, increased what they've done, they've, uh, told the students that they want to ride to back to school, and that they have to go through the training first. So, I think that's a good, good approach. And as far as enforcement, we're increasing our enforcement, and we're following Carl's and watching what they're doing, they're much bigger city, and they have more issues. So, we're, we're looking at what they're doing, and we need to work about that with the community.
Thank you. We'll move to a bit of a different topic now, um, this question is also going to be directed towards you, Joy. I can give you two minutes to answer this question. Since 2020, homeless residents in Encinitas decreased by seventy-four percent versus fifty percent, um, in the surrounding cities. Given that current policies addressing homelessness do not seem to be producing the exact results, how would you change the ways in which Encinitas is dealing with its increasing homeless population and its impacts on residents' quality of life?
Yeah, I've got to give you two minutes, and, uh, we'll give you two minutes. As a mother, about two, a seven-year-old, three, and a grandmother of four, and three of our grandchildren nearby, we love that city as far as we're radical homeless, and we are compassionate about wanting to help the, the community solve this problem. And I know you are too, and I hear from you all the time, what are you doing, and what's the problem? One of the challenges in the data you just gave is that was a 2020 to 2022 metric, and it did increase over that time, and we had some compounding issues that I think made the homelessness, uh, the homeless count is what you're referring to, a little, a little off, but, um, but, I want to say, over since 2015 to now, our homeless, uh, situation has gotten slightly better, but we can do much better. And I'm a big advocate for our homeless action plan, which we now have staff who administer this, and we're working with our regional partners. And we're working with our regional partners, like the county. You may have seen in the news that the county has just formed a committee through the Joyce neighborhooders specific to engage with all the municipalities and help solve the homeless issue. This is not just an Encinitas issue, this is a regional issue. This is a state issue and this is a national issue. We've seen it in other areas around the country. And I am a great proponent of these smart new policies we're putting into place, especially I own the George County Services Safe Parking Program, where all the citizens are starting, we have found houses for 154 people through that program. Now, think about that, that's 154 people. We captured and brought in some housing that are not on our streets. So I want you to think about it. That's a real statistics, statistic. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Julie, two minutes, thanks for your question. The question is, since 2020 homelessness in Encinitas has risen by 74% versus 50% in the neighboring cities. Given that current policies addressing homelessness do not seem to be producing the desired results, how would you change the ways in which Encinitas is dealing with its increasing homeless population and its impacts on residents' quality of life?
So homelessness did go up 74% per time count. In the meantime, our next story here, Carlsbad, a much bigger city than us, dropped by 20 points. Both sets an 18-point spread. What is Carlsbad doing right that we're doing wrong? Well, it's homeless. Carlsbad started forcing their quality of life ordinances. Carlsbad got proactive. Carlsbad got hired, closing down their children's playgrounds with vending hazard suits. The people had enough. They made the city address it. And I think that people have had enough in Encinitas and our city is not addressing it. You cannot rely on a homeless action plan. And I ask everyone in here to go tonight to the city's news website, search homeless action plan. It's about 20 or 30 page document. Read it, read it. You should know exactly what it reads like. A homeless in Encinitas plan. There's no plan. It's about hiring people and coming together. And this is what we feel and whereas, 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 whereas. And we'll get them here, then there. It's not how do we help homeless in Encinitas plan. I mean, read the plan, you'll see what I'm saying. Number two, the homeless coming, oh, I'm sorry. There's two factors in homelessness. There's people who got on, genuinely got on hard times and were looking on the street. I met a woman from Carton. I didn't meet her, I've known her forever. Teresa. Her daughter was in Girl Scouts, I know her, she's here tonight. Alyssa. Teresa was homeless after her kids grew up, kind of forgot us in the house. She was homeless in Carton, everybody knew her. I mean, everybody that was part of the group knew Teresa. I'll just touch just one thing about Teresa. It's not about the answer, I just wanted to say I can't leave. And it was for two years, everybody was afraid to see Teresa in Barnes or wherever you are because she was a mess. I saw her yesterday, oh, two days ago, and I thought, Teresa, I don't know which Teresa we're getting because she's had addictions. But she was funny, she got in the place. And she offered to tell me a lot of stuff about her as soon as I could get her into the community. So there are things out there, there are those people that have really missed out.
Next question is going to be for you, Julie. According to Standby's crime report released in April, crime in Encinitas rose 31% in 2021 versus 2020, compared to only 9% for the county overall. Why has our city laying the managing crime? And how would you seek to minimize crime for the Encinitas residents that she would represent? I'm going to give you both two minutes to answer this question.
Well, I went on a sheriff's department a few weeks ago. And it wasn't an overly eventful night, but I got a good bird's eye view of what happens in Encinitas. Number one, our downtown has become an attraction. And it doesn't happen until late at night. My husband and I go to dinner downtown almost every weekend. And I've never seen a figure I saw. So after 11 or 12 at night, our downtown turns into a frat party that we've never seen. People stop in the middle of the road, loud music, trunks on the street, people from a light post. And a lot of homeless are there too. But people are doing that much drinking, this is just downtown. Good things don't happen. Remember in your other time, nothing good happens after the night that happens on downtown. Number two, the sheriff's deputies are frustrated with the city letting the minor infractions that they write off the book. So if they, if someone journeying home and they get a ticket for that, they're being let off for that. So, and believe me, the people in our homeless population, they know that. They're out there, they show each other, they all have cell phones. So we have to enforce our quality of life ordinances. Once we start enforcing them and once we start asking, this is, I don't mean to defer to just about homeless, it's everybody. Once we start enforcing our rules and allow sheriff's deputies to do their job and have respect for what they're doing, I think we'll start seeing a turnaround. But it matters. And but it doesn't help that the state has adopted the self-care crime laws. But in Encinitas, you don't want to be a self-care student. So I would look for support on council to reenact, to reinforce those laws.
Thank you, Julie. Joy, you have about two minutes in this call.
Yes, I think that, I want to start by talking about our Sheriff's Department and how we focus on it. I also want to emphasize my year in office. I voted to fully fund our Sheriff's Department, even to the point where we said, do you need anything else? And they say, no, good. So we are so, and that's what's so important. Now, if you look at the data differently, I know the data you're referring to, but I don't want to use the data. That is, it's important. The data that we have this year so far over last year at the same time in the year is our crimes gone down 3% and our arrests have gone up 13%. Now, that's our Sheriff's Department's data, it's public information. This is good in that we are improving and we need to keep on being one foot in front of the other and make sure we do everything possible to be on the spot, to be there when you're needed in all the wide range of the types of things that our sheriff handles for us. Supporting our Sheriff's Department, they are the experts and they are awesome. Our captain Lopez, he's just amazing. And he's not only just a good leader, he's a good problem solver. Because not all of our issues are strictly law enforcement. He's just recently been able to engage with me with a neighborhood group who are facing some challenges associated with some mental health issues in the neighborhood. And we were able to use the HOS program, which is the citizens orientation for partnering and policing, to bring in some special officers to help navigate that complex issue. So the more we have these special programs where we can access special people to help with the nuanced differences between one issue over another issue, that's our solution. And that's the one we hold in the right direction.
Thank you, Joy. It's a bit of a miscellaneous topic now, sort of have a few questions of a variety of issues. So one minute to answer. Joy, we'll start with you. What is your position on the Carton Elementary lawsuit?
Now, I'll refer back to the fact that I have been in office for a few months. And the lawsuit is history in our community. There's, there's been, this is a classic example of what we don't want to do by to the neighborhood. There's a lot of grief in our community about what has happened over that lawsuit. We don't have to go there. There's a reasonable outcome. There was a reasonable outcome that ended up occurring and that was the right outcome. And if we could have just done there without damaging our relationship across all the car, that would have been so much better. So we really want, I want to say again, we're not behind our common interest of problem solving. Joy, looking forward into the future so that we don't blame ourselves in such a adversarial neighborhood situation again. We can do, we can do it, I'm a victim of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, you have one minute to respond.
Well, I have one last one. My opponent does a good part of it. Taxes aren't going to go up because of what our school district had to pay when they were suing not once but twice. Those lawsuits signed to correct the situation that could have been corrected without a law. I went to those school meetings and Carton went to, I went to the school. I went to this school, I went to this school meetings all alone. And I saw upset parents, I saw angry community members, and I saw the district making a speech challenge. And I'm not going to say I'm even happy that I would have picked the final outcome, but I'm mad at thousands of people. Community, Carton wanted a new school, period. A group of neighbors sued our school and our city did nothing. And they could have, they have the power to piss it. Thank you.
This next question is going to be for you, Julie, which is, the Encinitas general plan states the importance of public viewing protection. Do you think that there should be boundary regulation regulations similar to the fence height regulations?
Can you say that again?
Sure. The Encinitas's general plan states the importance of public viewing protections. Should there be boundary regulation regulations similar to fence height regulations?
Wow. That would be really interesting. The city of Del Mar, I'm surprised, the city of Del Mar has a U-Orbit. And, oh, there's just so much angst in the city of Del Mar about that. I don't want friends to live down there and they tell them what they go through. So what you're talking about essentially is a tree or a shrub ordinance or U-Orbit. Am I correct? I'll tell you what, I live in a nuclear area and I find that for the most part, neighbors work it out. And if a neighbor has a tree in another neighbor's U-Orbit or U-Orbit, typically they work it out. But sometimes they don't. And it would be nice, oh, I hate rules like that, I hate laws like that. But it would be nice to have a way to monitor that. And if someone plans a line van move right in front of someone's view, maybe the city could do something that I'm not sure about.
Thank you. Joy, you have one minute.
I was just reading your approach by the president to do that, I didn't have problems associated with U-Orbit. So I have a recent experience with that. But also, I understand how tricky it can be. So I think we're, we generally have a community who doesn't like a lot of regulation. You know, just come and live and let live and we're happy about that. We don't want to be too infringed upon, so I kind of like that. I would like to have a public forum on that if people are interested. Because I know the lone resident that I was talking to was saying it's so important. But I also know we don't want to be regulated. So in general, we want the freedom to do what we want to do on our property. So this would be a great opportunity for that public forum to get people together and see if it really is of interest. It is, it is a little tricky when you start creating a U-Orbit. So I think that we have to go into it with our eyes open about what the challenges are. And I expect the process to do that with your input.
Thank you, Joy. I'm going to direct this next question towards you as well, slightly different topic. Are you supportive of the council's decision to automatically enable residents in the higher tier cost CCC energy?
So that gives the San Diego Community Tower and the Community Choice Energy, CCC, and it's gone, it's gone by the SDC, San Diego City. And what we chose to do, and I stand behind it, is to go with the default choice for clean energy. We are a community that has always embraced the environment. So we are a community that has always come forward and said, we want to be a model of leadership for clean energy. So we were getting the input that the choice for 100% clean energy is the way to go for our revenues. And I have to say that in the feedback that people are in favor of that. Now, a few people were navigating the process when it first started, but I'm completely advocate for it. And I think every time you turn on this channel, that's renewable energy we're using, okay? We're in that program. And that's astronomical that we have done that. It's amazing. And we're achieving our climate action plan goals.
Julie, you have one minute.
I would never have forced a community a higher level tier energy bill. I wouldn't do that. I might encourage people, I might as a city vote to run some ads and encourage people to choose the higher one. But I would never have called them into the higher plan. By the way, when that plan was decided, when we went with San Diego Community Tower, the consultant that we came up with money to, recommended not going with them, recommended that we go with Salona Beach and Carlsbad. I don't know why we didn't. I think we should. I think I'd rather be enjoying with our neighbors and cities that have similar issues to ours than San Diego, Chilis, Imperial Region, I think, or Mesa. I don't know why it's places, but then Elmore County was just, that was a critical choice, our council made. But no, I would never enroll by default in the higher plan. Especially in a city that we're crying about urban housing so much. I would do that.
Thank you. Next question is going to also be for you. What is your plan to preserve open spaces in Encinitas and in Carton specifically?
Well, I have a very current plan. I'd like to restore the open space acquisition fund, which was $1.2 million that got called for a buy. When I waited two years ago, I have my money, where's the money? We need the money in the fund if we're going to buy open space. You don't just get open space, nobody gives it to you. You have to purchase it. Is $1.2 enough to purchase something in our area? Like you have to have something to go after the matching ranks and gather all the same funds. Problem is, my opponent did an open space resolution that does nothing. It has much awareness, it says we like this, we like that, and whereas we also think this is good, but it does nothing. All that came on day one to restore the fund, $1.2 million, so we can actually make some headway with preserving some of the undeveloped natural land, which are birds and native plants.
We love our open space, which is why we put forward the open space initiative. And it's multi-pronged, so it's somewhat complex in that what we are aiming to add are the lower growing fruit. It's not, it's not so much acquisition because that's, we need a lot of money to do that. But what we already have is 23% of that area in our city is already in open space. Did you know that? But a lot of it is not accessible, it's not good quality open space. We haven't really had a plan to steward it really well. So the first, the first approach is to better steward our habitat in our open space. We're already going for it, we're going on that and it's already getting funding. The second step is to check about the multi-seeds habitat conservation plan, which we decided not to do 20 years ago. But there's a lot of methods to looking at our whole city in terms of where is the best habitat and how can we preserve it? So there's four different prompts to this plan and we're moving forward on all of them.
This next question that I'm going to ask is going to be our last question before closing statements. Yeah, it's up to you, Julie. So residents in this district have a passion for our community. What do you like most about living in this district? I'll give you two minutes as well.
Oh, my goodness, gosh. Okay, so there's so many things I can say. We have such vitality. This community is young, it's old, it's artists, it's doctors, with a plumber living next door to a musician, and man, we are awesome. And I want to eat that, and I want to keep us that diverse and that rich in actually culture. And so one of the reasons I'm concerned about our housing is because we're losing our people under 40 years old. They are moving out. They get to a certain point, and they're looking for homes, and they're telling me, we can't buy here. The community, they were raised, and they can't buy here. And they're okay with a smaller unit. So what I want to do is help our people stay here, because that's what's vital to us, that's our vitality. I want our artists to be able to afford housing, and I want the next generation of our children, when they grow up, to have an option to stay here. So that's what I've done by.
Julie.
I have to do a little bit on that. I have three daughters who want to own some place here. Kind of a little place, our place. We often get into it, she got shot for her career trauma. The other three, they can't afford anything. I'm living in this situation. My husband and I are doing financial planning, figuring out what can we do to help our daughters own home somewhere. The housing plan that I had just talked about is not about ownership. It is nothing about ownership, and I need everyone here to get that. It's only rentals. One of the 15 projects off Stone Farm is doing convenience, and guess what? The affordable units of those condos are under rent. You can't buy them. So if you push for more high-quality housing because of the affordability, all you're doing, which is fair, you need it, but what we're doing is we're getting way more pasta and art-based housing for a tiny bit of a four-story apartment. Think about that. It's not about owning a four-story home, or any home.
So much. That will lead to those statements, and we're going to give you one minute. Julie, you got it all?
Well, I went first in the beginning, which is why I go first in here.
Julie, go ahead.
We have a lot of state in Carton and District Three. I have the values of the Carton community. I care about what we do and how we look forward, and I'm looking forward into the future, not looking back. I'm a transparent like a Democrat, I don't change with the wind. I build consensus and get things done, not just say no to improvements. I unite us behind an improving quality of life, not turn neighbor against neighbor. We need bold action in the right forward-thinking direction. I have a crystal clear view of our future, and I think you do too. We know what's a good, what good decision to take is, and it is looking into the future and seeing how we can manage our way forward. My endorsements speak to these values. I endorse by the Climate Practice Action Plan, the CEO of the S E I U of Union Level 221, Congressman Mike Levin, San Diego Democratic Club, and the Young Democratic Club, to name a few. I am also a honest and independent citizen's candidate. I respectfully ask for your vote. I would be honored to continue to serve.
Thank you, Julie. Julie, a woman.
I want to thank Carton Town Council for hosting tonight and for all of you for coming. We discussed several important topics tonight. I know crime and homelessness are high levels of concerns, but desiccation is the most important consequential issue. Desiccation will bring irreversible change, because folks, once you cover property with 200 apartments, it can't be undone. So who are you left? Someone who's thrown down the table, or someone likely thinks enough is enough. One last thing, and the last one, sorry, AIPAC, Fund for Climate Transition, and some local developers, hey, Marco, who want their projects approved quickly, paying after me harder, fishing out lots of public acquisition. I expect they'll say anything to keep me on council and to keep themselves on great return. So the final days of this campaign, if you see that sort of messaging from them, don't believe it. The Julie letter you saw tonight, I think what you saw, you know, was the real tell. Thanks a lot.
And that concludes our forum. Please be sure to join us next week for our arrow, always at the same time and place. And if there's any questions online, it's our topic here.